Kevin Wiskey.
Here.
Jason Wosley.
Here.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, I'll open public comments. This is for items for either general public comments or for public comments on an action item. If commenting on an action item, please place the agenda item on the request to speak form. Do we have anybody who would like to speak on public comments? Seeing none, I'll close public comments. First action item is approval of minutes for July 9, 2013, regular minutes.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wiskey.
So moved.
Before we vote on that, I need to recuse myself.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair. Commissioners Stapleton abstains.
Okay, I have two abstaining. And I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All against? Hearing none. Five with two abstaining. Okay, city LaZion report. And there's nothing. We have one postponement. That was the Somerset Village number five, LDC 13-00063. That will be on the agenda in September.
It's been postponed, so it'll be re-noticed.
Okay. So, item number two, LDC 13-00065, the Longley Professionals Center signed variance. If the applicant, please come before us.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Ken Crater. I'm representing both the applicant and the owner, Lucy Properties LLC. And I've got a couple of photos to put up here as I'm talking. Our request is for permission to add a three-foot by eight-foot LED animated sign face to an existing 16-foot-high freestanding sign located at 7025 Longley Lane in an industrial commercial zoning district. Lucy Property has owned the building since it was constructed in 1996. They clearly raised the bar at that time with very good architecture and landscaping. The only access to the property is off of Maestro Drive to preserve traffic flow on Longley Lane. Two pylon signs are allowed in the IC District, one on each frontage, but only one was used. All in all, a very well-done project. And the photograph right here shows the existing pylon sign that exists on the property. And you can see in the top area here, that is where the digital section is proposed to go within that existing sign. And then that is a photograph of the front of the existing building. And you can see it's got very nice architecture, well-maintained by the Lucy family. Approximately two years ago, they lost their major tenant, a veterinary hospital. Since that time, the building has had a high vacancy rate. In fact, it's always had a fairly high vacancy rate, and it has been very difficult to find tenants. At the site's location and zoning limit potential uses. The property lies midway between South Virginia Street and Double R Boulevard. Charles River Laboratory lies across Maestro to the north, and Arrow Electronics lies across Longley to the east. The site is located at the southern tip of a large industrial commercial zoning district, but the small size of the parcel, approximately 1.48 acres, made it unsuitable for warehouse distribution, manufacturing, or typical industrial commercial uses. And that shows the location in that southern tip of the IC District. You can see it's right next to a parcel that's zoned GO, General Office.
Can you zoom in, please? Zoom in, please.
Commercial uses that are allowed in the IC District are already located in large commercial districts located at South Virginia, Double R Boulevard, and McCarran Boulevard. In 2004, the Reno Planning Commission and Reno City Council adopted a text amendment to add barber beauty salons, retail bakeries, and general personal services as allowed uses in the industrial commercial district. However, due to an oversight, those additional uses were not added to the actual code and have thus not been available uses for the project until staff has just recently notified this issue, compounding the difficulty in trying to lease up the building. The site is ideal for another veterinary hospital as this is what the building was originally designed for, but the previous tenant, A+ Animal Hospital, moved one block down the street, and with the economic downturn, no other vet has expressed any interest in relocating or starting a new business with a close-by competition. A+ Animal Hospital has a digital sign as they are not located in the IC District. In addition, commercial uses both to the north and south have digital signs. The nearest visible residence is approximately 375 feet to the south of the project on the east side of Longley and is largely hidden behind mature trees. And you can see in the photograph, this is the nearest residence. It's approximately 375 feet from the sign, and you can see all the mature trees that block the view of the homes from this sign. In November 2008, the Reno Planning Commission approved the 21-square-foot animated sign for a store-all facility located at North Virginia Street and US 395 in Panther Valley, also in an industrial commercial district. Staff recommended approval of this animated sign as case number LDC 0900012. The sign has since been built. Thus, the owner feels that some type of advantage is needed to help counteract the hardships created by the small lot size, location of the property at the southern tip of the IC District, and the nearby location and proximity of other commercial and office complexes. The Lucy family has noticed that the added visibility of the existing digital signs located one block south on the A+ Animal Hospital and at the Longley West Plaza on South Virginia Street give these facilities an economic advantage, and that the 24-square-foot digital sign would help attract attention to their Longley Professional Center. In addition, a major tenant would be able to use this digital section of the sign to help attract clients and new customers with various messages. Staff suggested that the Lucy family apply for a zone change to General Office as animated signs are allowed in the GO District. The property immediately to the west again is zoned GO, and GO is a compatible use with the industrial land use category. However, the family simply does not have the resources at this time to cover the zone change application fee of over $11,000. The three-foot by eight-foot digital LED sign face will be located again on the upper portion of the existing 16-foot-tall freestanding sign. The sign will be programmed to prohibit flashing. The Lucy family is absolutely fine with the condition of approval that flashing not be allowed. The sign will be ordered such that the maximum daytime brightness of the sign will only be 49% of the maximum brightness allowed. This will also reduce energy cost and prolong bulb life. The sign will also be ordered to prohibit nighttime or to provide nighttime brightness of only 50% of the daytime brightness. A photocell will cause the sign to reduce brightness once nighttime arrives. The findings that are required to make the variance are as follows. One, the property is characterized by an extraordinary or exceptional situation or condition. Response, as noted above, the site is located at the southern tip of a large industrial commercial zoning district, and its small size of less than 1.5 acres makes it unsuitable for typical industrial uses such as warehouse, distribution, manufacturing, call centers, charter schools, or sale of building and landscape materials. In addition, the location on Longley in proximity to the Huffacre Neighborhood makes the site unsuitable for more intensive industrial uses such as machine shops, outdoor storage, adult businesses, auto repair service stations. Finally, the uses more suitable for the site, such as offices, daycare, restaurants, have chosen to go in the more heavily-traveled areas at McCarran, Double R, and South Virginia Street where animated signs are allowed. These extraordinary and exceptional situations have created a great hardship for the owners in trying to lease their building. Number two, the strict application of the regulation would result in peculiar and exceptional practical difficulties to or exceptional and undue hardships. Response, the close proximity to commercially-zoned properties that allow animated signs and the issues previously noted will continue to make it extremely difficult to lease this building and generate tax revenue for the city. The larger industrial boxes to the north and east do not rely on signage to attract their customers and clients. This property is clearly in a transition area, and the strict application of the sign code that prohibits animated signs in the IC District clearly creates a hardship for the property owner in trying to compete and attract good tenants. Three, the granting of the variance will not be detrimental materially detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare or injures to property improvements in the vicinity. As shown in the photo, the nearest visible residence is approximately 375 feet to the south of the existing sign on the opposite side of Longley Lane and largely hidden behind mature trees. Dimming features programmed into the sign, including no flashing, will ensure that granting of this variance request for the small 24-square-foot digital LED sign will not be materially detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare or injures to property improvements in the vicinity of the project. Four, the proposed variance is consistent with the intent and purpose of this chapter. Response, granting of the variance will help lease the building with high-quality tenants, creating new economic growth in a high-quality building that has been well-maintained by the owner who has resisted leasing to tenants that would be deemed obnoxious or problematic by nearby residents and businesses. Specifically, the proposed variance is consistent with, one, the intent and purpose of this chapter is to encourage quality non-residential development that preserves and protects the character of the community, and, two, the intent and purpose of this chapter is to provide for economic advantages gained from a comprehensively-planned use of land resources. And finally, Neighborhood Advisory Board information, the project is located in the Ward Two Central Neighborhood Advisory Board. We met Monday at a joint meeting of both the Central and South Neighborhood Advisory Boards, and I believe staff has handed you a copy of their comments. We pointed out the plans for dimming and programming features tonight to prohibit flashing to specifically address NAB comments. Thank you, and now I'd like to introduce Marshall Lucy, one of the owners of the property, to speak for a couple of minutes.
Hi, and good evening. I am Marshall Lucy, the managing member of Lucy Properties LLC.
Could you talk into the microphone, please?
Sorry. And I manage the properties for myself and my three adult children. And of course, my parents who are in their 80s, they're the sole trustees of the property. The property has been owned by our family when my father purchased it from the Quilisi family back in the 90s. And since then, it's definitely been a family property. It was, as Ken had mentioned, it was mainly for the intent of my ex-husband, a veterinarian, to have a location for his South Reno hospital. And he became very successful in that location because we had a reader board. It's a nice location, and we had a reader board on our old monument sign, which was extremely instrumental in making our, improving our business. And it was a startup on the south end of Reno, and we did well with the reader board. Of course, as you've heard, we've divorced, he moved on, and he's built himself a new practice and left our building over 50% vacant. The building has suffered hardship since day one. We didn't realize that although we put a lot of money into it and it was suited for a lot of uses, hair salons and whatnot that came to us were not able to come into us, into our building because of the IC zoning and went down into other places that were not as suitable. But, so we were limited to office, and of course, veterinary office blend is difficult. We've never made a lot of money on the building, but we work very hard. It's, we've had a lot of pride, and it's been maintained by the family. Most of the maintenance, the landscaping, the cleaning, the snow shoveling, has all been done by us. Free management, we only pay for the utilities and what we have to pay for to exist. So, it's never been what I would say for the actual LLC viable property that it's made a lot of money or anything like that. We've never even got a distribution out of it. The sad thing here is that my parents now have put all their capital into this property, and they're in their 80s. They've worked here in Reno and Sparks their entire life, building businesses. And now, they've been, as their trustees, in extended low-interest rates so we could survive. Now, since we are making minimal income from just the limited office space, I can't even make payments to my parents, and I'm very concerned. They're in their mid-80s and getting very close to needing assisted living, and they're in some sort of income. And unless I can sell it or lease it, we're in a bad position as a family property. I do know that a digital sign, I did the digital sign in the monument sign just to update the property and attract a tenant. Am I, oh, and replace the old sign and reader board. And I didn't realize until I had planned on it and had the monument sign in that the digital sign didn't fit into the IC zoning. So it was sort of a bad situation. But as always, we've taken immaculate care of the building, and I wanted to continue to set the standard that we had with a nice monument sign instead of an outdated one and an old reader board. And I didn't realize I wasn't able to, and I just wanted to be able to compete with the other commercial properties since I've had this vacancy for over two years. The property's been listed with two prominent commercial brokers with no interest to purchase since the cap rate is way low for the book value and very little interest in leasing. So I really felt that I needed to step forward and do something, and of course, by eliminating the old sign, I don't even have the reader board anymore. Now, so I think that the digital will definitely work, and the reason is, is I've looked in statistics. It is a strong form of marketing. The reader board was successful. It would be successful. It is one of the best avenues. The other thing is, besides this property, we have another property in Sparks. It's in a very compromised neighborhood, and we were left with that one as well. That property's been in my parents' since the 60s, but it's on Prater by Victorian. And we had to start a hospital there because nobody was interested, so we did it ourselves. And one thing we did is a digital sign. And even though it's in a compromised area, low income, mainly Spanish-speaking, our numbers of clientele and growth have just been unbelievable. All the veterinary, which the professionals had said they just can't believe the numbers we're getting. And one of the reasons that people are walking in our door is because of the digital sign. Now, what I didn't calculate is that in two years of being open, it's very costly to open a new business, and this is what we would have in Longley, whether it be a vet hospital or another, much more than I expected. And just this month, we are finally breaking even. Not paying rent, we're breaking even. Not making a profit, but we've had incredible growth. And hopefully, with a digital sign in Sparks, we will be able to have continued growth.
Okay, please wrap it up.
So, my point that I'm making is that if I didn't have that digital sign and the people coming in the door, I wouldn't be breaking even today. I'd be losing money. I didn't have any more money to lose, and the doors would be closed. We employed 20 people, and the parking lot was known to drug trafficking until we opened the doors. If we were to close the doors, it would be back to drug trafficking in Sparks, and it would be 20 people unemployed.
Okay.
The digital sign's been very positive for us.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, staff?
Good evening. Vern Close, Senior Planner. In order to make the, approve the variance, all four, the findings must be made. In reviewing this project, staff is unable to make findings A, B, and D. Finding A indicates that the, requires that the property be characterized by an exceptional situation or condition, or it has an exceptional topographic conditions at the time of enactment of the regulation. Property is rectangular in shape, has no physical constraints, and has frontage on a major arterial on a collector's street, making it very visible for traffic on both of these streets. The uses listed in the application is suitable for the site. Office, daycare, animal, hospital, restaurants are all permitted in the GO zone, which allows animated signs. The fact that the applicant is unable to find tenants because animated flashing signs are not allowed in the IC zone does not constitute an exceptional or extraordinary condition. These types of signs have not been allowed in the IC zone since at least 1997. Therefore, staff can't make finding A. The strict application of the regulation would result in a peculiar or exceptional situation or difficulty or hardship to the property owner. Again, there are several GO zone properties in the vicinity of the site that currently allow the uses that they are targeting, and I don't believe any of those properties have animated or flashing signs. In fact, the only animated sign I did see was on the new vet hospital to the south, which is in the MU zone, which allows it. There were no other animated or flashing signs between McCarran Boulevard and South Virginia Street. There were a couple on South Virginia Street. The size of the property permitted uses and signed regulations have not materially changed since 1997. To assert that the ordinance results in an exceptional difficulty or hardship to the property owner when this type of sign hasn't been allowed in the IC zone when the building essentially was constructed, and because there is a viable solution to this situation, changing the zoning to GO, staff cannot make finding B. And finding D, the animated sign is not consistent with the intent and purpose of the ordinance section proposed to be varied, which is not to allow flashing or animated signs in the IC zone. Also, allowing an animated sign is no guarantee the building will not be leased or sold in the future, thus allowing the building to be used for unsuitable or more intensive IC uses such as machine shops, outdoor storage, auto repair, and gas stations because the site could possibly support those types of uses. Since the uses, again, since the uses targeted by the applicant are all allowed in the GO zone, from our perspective, the appropriate avenue is to change the zone to GO, which allows the sign. That concludes my presentation. We did receive one phone call just with questions from the lab across the street to the north, and we got one email in opposition, which you folks all have in front of you with a letter from Lori Ray and some attachments. That, again, that concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Vern.
Thank you.
Commissioners, and we'll start with Commissioner Wosley. Disclosures, please.
Just an email.
Visited the sites and emails.
And please state your name.
Oh, Commissioner Reno.
Commissioner Locke, I am familiar with the site, and I received an email.
Commissioner Staples.
Emails.
Commissioner Levis, received the email and visited the site.
Commissioner Wiskey, I visited the site, received two emails.
And Commissioner Kaufman, I visited the site and also received two emails. Okay, Commissioners, questions?
Chairman. Commissioner Wiskey, question for the applicant's representative. Ken, barring financial issues that you brought up earlier, and you well know, especially being former staff, that that's not a consideration made by Planning Commission, what are your hardships? I mean, I'm still waiting to see what the hardships are. There's a lot of property in town that hasn't been able to be leased for the last more than two years. So, that and no financial considerations, what is the hardship?
The hardship is the small size of the property and location in that very southern tip of the IC District. Because of the small size of the property, it prohibits doing any of the larger uses that are allowed in the industrial commercial zone because they don't physically fit, like a warehouse and distribution. And the other hardship is the property's developed is not suited for, say, a service station, adult businesses, nor would anybody want it. So, it's the size and location that create the hardship, and I also want to point out that...
But what has, what has generated, other than what the property owner has built there, what has generated a hardship? It sounds like the owner has possibly generated their own hardship by their, by their previous development.
Well, no, because when they built the building, they had a veterinary clinic to fill 5,800 square feet of the building, and they wanted to do something that fit with the city of Reno's vision. And they felt that the vision was to do a high-quality building with nice landscaping and good tenants, and it does fit very well with the neighborhood with the old Estee Rance project to the south, the nice restaurants that have been built up. And I think if you look at the storage yards and construction yards to the south, that's everybody's hope and desire that eventually those go away and get something more attractive like the building that the Lucy family built. And the other thing I want to point out is that the intent and purpose of the chapter specifically states economic...
You've already answered my question. Thank you, Ken.
Commissioner Reno.
Yeah, Ken, so 50% of it, I heard, is occupied? Is that correct?
Roughly 50%, correct.
Okay. And what, what business is that? What kind of use is that?
There's a couple of insurance businesses. That's probably the bulk of it.
An insurance and a dance studio.
And a dance studio.
A dance studio. Okay. So you were able to get some tenants. Okay.
Right.
That's my question. Thanks.
Commissioner Stapleton.
Yeah, Commissioner Stapleton, I want to follow up on Commissioner Wiskey's question, but I want to ask staff. I just want to address, thanks, Vern, I just want to address the applicant's assertion that the lot size is a hardship. I know that there are a lot of lots, probably that size or smaller, in the IC zone. In your staff report, you found that there was not a hardship. In terms of lot size being a hardship, is that small for a lot in the IC zone? Or usually, to make a hardship for lot size, doesn't it have to be irregular size?
If you look at, what, this size, about an acre and a half? Is that, I'm sorry, yeah, about an acre and a half. If you look at the parcels to the south and southwest, they're all about the same size or maybe a little larger. Here's a project site. There's this one and this one and these three here, which are probably one and a half, two acres in size. The building that was built on it was sized for the parcel for, based on what the requirements at the time it was built required. So, I'm not necessarily seeing lot size as a hardship. It's a regularly-shaped lot. It's been developed probably close to the fullest extent based on its size, and it's right on a major arterial and a collector's street with good visibility. So, I don't know that that's a hardship. Maybe from their perspective it is, but from our perspective, there's no physical constraints that, you know, reduce the visibility of the site. There isn't like a big hill in the way, or it has good access, that sort of stuff, visibility. So, from our perspective, we're not seeing that in this instance.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome. Welcome.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Commissioner Woosley, for the record, a question for staff. If you did go forward as proposed and move it over to GEO, do you find that, that you could run 24 hours with that animated sign? In a GEO?
A GEO use, I believe, would require a special use permit to operate between 11:00 and 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM. So if they wanted to, GEO would allow the sign, but I, in order to increase, well, we just did a GEO project about two months ago in the Lakewood Center for that restaurant. They were in for an SUP to operate between 11:00 and 6:00. So, in order to operate a business past then, I guess theoretically the sign could, even though the business didn't go past there, but generally, there would be no need for it to be on during that time period, if they weren't open.
And that's exactly what I'm asking. I was wondering, because of its residential adjacency, you know, even if the business closed at 9:00 PM in a GEO, could they operate the sign 24 hours?
Theoretically, yes. And actually, they are not, they do not have residential adjacency. They almost have it, but they don't.
Okay. The parcel that, that was being shown in the picture, is that, that's all the way down to the nearest residential?
What, here's residential right here.
You need to show the, the one house that you were showing? And that was the 300 and?
75.
Okay, thank you very much. So, that would be, if that was the direction we went, that would be a restriction that we'd have to put on there for hours of operation with, of the sign, not only business hours, but of the actual sign operating hours as well?
In this instance?
No, no, if it went to GEO.
If it went to GEO, that would be determined at such time as something came in that would trigger that. But just because the use isn't open between 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM wouldn't necessarily mean they would have to turn the sign off if there were no other review process involved.
That answers my question. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Locke, Vern, I have one question that I know was, I know Ken talked about, but now I can't recall. So what's the history of this parcel and why isn't it zoned GEO? There was something said to the fact that maybe it was supposed to be rezoned GEO, but it wasn't?
I think, Vern Close, Senior Planner, I think what he said was that there were in, about 12 years ago, we did a text amendment to allow some of the uses that are in GEO in the IC. I was Barber and Beauty Salons, Ken. Those, those uses were by text amendment allowed in the IC zone. No, this site has always, has been IC zone for 20 years, 18 years at least. This whole area was IC when it came in the city back in the early 90s, late 80s. And then when we converted to the, the new zoning districts, that basically most of this area was IC or IB.
Thank you.
Any more questions, commissioners? I missed a step here. And that's public comment. Do we have anybody in the audience that would like to make a public comment on this, this action item? Hearing and seeing none, then I'll close the public comments. Bring it back to the commissioners for discussion.
Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Wieske, in this project, the way the application has been presented to us, because the request is for flashing slash animated signage, I don't feel that the animated part of, of the digital sign is appropriate for this location. If the flashing signage, if it was only flashing and it was conditioned similar to what we have proposed to city council for digital billboards, and along with dimming it of the sign after 10 o'clock, which was discussed by the applicant's representative, I could probably, I know I could make the findings, but I can't the way that the application was presented to us. And I am going to be supporting staff's recommendation for denial, because I also cannot make the findings the same as staff. Thank you.
Commissioner Stapleton?
I also cannot make the findings A, B, and D. I think regardless of the flashing or animated or not, to make the findings for the variance, which we're required to do, we have to be able to find a hardship, and I, and I just can't see what the hardship is here. And I think it's important for us to be able to, when we're making that finding, because this is a complete variation from the allowed use and from the code, that we be able to make that finding and really determine that there's a hardship there. And I cannot determine that there's a hardship. I also can't see how the strict application would result in a hardship. And also, to me, the proposed variance is not consistent with the intent and purpose, which clearly is to not allow animated and digital signs in IC. And so I think it's pretty clear, and I can't make those findings.
Commissioner Olivas?
Commissioner Olivas, I, I guess first I'd say, I mean, I think it's a great building. It's a nice location, but kind of back to the not being able to look at the financial aspects of it, I, I don't know if the competitiveness and the economic environment really is, is a hardship in, in the guidelines for the variance. And with that, I can't make the findings same as staff, A, B, and D, and that while it may be unfortunate economic situation, that's, I don't think justifies the variance.
Thank you. Commissioner Locke?
Mr. Chair. I would agree with Commissioner Olivas. I mean, it's, it's a nice building, it has nice landscaping, there's, you know, there, it seems to me there are alternate ways to get the kind of tenants that you want. I mean, that's what a lot of people in Reno are having to do right now. But moreover, I just don't think that Reno in general, I mean, I know we're supposed to be focusing on the variance aspects here, and while, yes, I also cannot find those findings, I think overarching, the issue here is, I really don't think people in Reno want animated signs, and there's just nothing in here that really says it that's pulling people to businesses. And, you know, so, for me, what, what I couldn't find at first was finding C, because I couldn't see that it wouldn't be detrimental to the welfare. I, I just think it kind of degrades the equality of the property and the neighborhood, just like I think some people said in the NAB, so.
Commissioner Reno?
There you go. Yeah. Animated sign or otherwise, I just can't, I can't see, you know, an exceptional situation here. The property's been leased for many, many years. I mean, it's, it's bad times, but I just, I just don't see how there could be an exceptional situation. So I really can't make finding A. That's it.
Commissioner Woosley, for the record? You know, I was pretty interested to hear what everybody had to say on this, because I am, you know, as presented, I cannot support or make the findings, but it would have been close. I was worried about hours of operation. It is so close to other industrial use, but it is also very close to residential. And trying to figure out how I could support this, and I have to agree, as how it's presented tonight, I cannot make finding A, and that is what my biggest concern. In fact, I can't make any of the findings, but A was the one I was really concerned about. That's it. Thanks.
Commissioner Kaufman, I have to go with staff's recommendation too. And the findings that A, B, and C that they couldn't make, so with that, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Commissioner Wieske?
Thank you. In the case of LDC 13-00065, Longley Professional Center signed variance based upon noncompliance with the applicable findings, I move to deny the variance. And again, for the record, I cannot make findings A, B, C, or D.
Mr. Chair. I will second that, and I cannot make the findings A, B, C, and D.
And that's Commissioner Woosley. All in favor, sign aye, saying aye?
Aye.
All against? So it's seven to zero for the motion. Any action taken by the planning commission on a tentative map, special use permit, variance or Skyway is final unless appealed. Any person aggrieved by the decision may file an appeal. Each person in a team must make his or her own appeal. Appeals must be filed with the city clerk within 10 days of the planning commission hearing by submitting the appropriate form and fee. All other matters will be forwarded to city council with the planning commission's recommendations. All right. Next item is LDC 13-00068, Heart to Hand School, and the applicant's representative?
Derek, if I could, before you get started, Mr. Chairman, I have a disclosure to make above and beyond our typical disclosures. My employer has consulted with Heart to Hand in the spring of 2013 on other sites and other developments for their future growth. After discussing that with our deputy city attorney, Mr. Shipman, we just, it was determined that a disclosure would be okay, since we are not currently under contract, nor have we discussed the application that's before us for this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Wieske.
All right. Good evening. Derek Wilson with Rubicon Design Group on behalf of Heart to Hand School. Our request is to add a primary school to a site that currently contains a preschool. It's the same operation, it's Heart to Hand. They're expanding into the primary school operations. This is a site that has operated as a primary school in the past. In my opinion, it's proven itself suitable for this use. It's generously sized, it functions well, it's a very attractive and safe site. The staff report contains conditions that will mitigate any impacts we're likely to bring. This is additional fencing and some traffic circulation, coordination or redesign, essentially striping and coordinating a drop-off zone. I, I think that, given the track record of the site and Heart to Hand as a, as a good neighbor and a, and a good operator, I, I think that I'm, I'm happy to make this a brief presentation. I think the staff report adequately addresses impacts, and I'd be happy to answer specific questions if anything comes up. I would like to clarify that this application has the potential for new construction, but they're not going to immediately pursue it. It won't be this year, so they're, we're not currently in discussion with Wieske or anybody else on, on new construction for right now. All right, thank you.
Thank you, staff.
Good evening, Vern Close, Senior Planner. As you know, this is a request to increase the enrollment at the school from 49 to 114 students. The primary impacts that staff identified were related to adding additional screening along the north side. There's some gaps in the fence that they would fill in along the north side adjacent to the residential property, and then also put a solid fence along Peckham, but that would only be four and a half feet tall to help minimize the noise coming off the increased amount of children on the site. Also, they would be required to add a drop-off zone on their, near the playground area right here, because with elementary school kids, they generally are just dropped off. The preschoolers are more, their parents park in a space and bring them into the facility, so that additional condition should address the operational access requirements for the elementary school. There's also a limitation on outdoor play between 8:30 and 5:30, so that there isn't organized play before 8:30. And also the addition of, replacement of some trees along Peckham Lane that needed to be filled in. So, staff leaves the use as appropriate for the site. The addition would allow for a preschool, an elementary school, or a combination of both. That's, other than the addition, that was the other main reason for the application, was to allow them the flexibility to have one and/or both. So with that, that concludes my presentation. I did receive one call with no objections and two emails. You have those emails. One was sent to you before the meeting, and one was also included in the packet I gave you at the start of the meeting. So at that point, I'll conclude my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Vern.
Thank you.
Could we, commissioners, have disclosures? We'll start at the Commissioner Wieske.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I visited the site, and I received an email forwarded by staff. And once again, after my discussion with Deputy City Attorney Shipman, there's no reason for me to recuse myself from this agenda item. Thanks.
Commissioner Olivas, I also received the email and visited the site.
Commissioner Stapleton, I also received an email and visited the site. Commissioner Locke, I visited the site and received the email.
Commissioner Reno, I visited the site and received the emails.
Commissioner Woosley, I also visited the site and, sorry, and received emails.
And Commissioner Kaufman, I visited the site and also saw the emails. With that, I'd like to open public hearing, or, and is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on, on this particular agenda item? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close public comments. Turn it back to the commissioner for questions. Commissioner Stapleton?
Yeah, I just have one quick technical question for staff. Vern, the request is for an SUP for the school in SF-15 adjacent to residential, and also to add a greater than 2,000, or 2,000 square foot building. Why is an SUP required in that zone for the 2,000 square foot building? Is it any building of that size?
It's, it's an expansion of a non-residential use. So, the use itself, the school requires it, and then adding more buildings requires that. So this is just to ensure that everybody knows what is going on, but it's also required as part of the SUP.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Commissioner Reno?
Yeah, Commissioner Reno, for the record. Vern, as I was reading through this, I was a little confused on the, there's 84, the number 84 children kept coming up, and is that, is that to understand that they have capacity for 84, but they can only have 49 at the time, right, currently?
Right, right now, they are allowed to have 49. Until they add the other building, they only would have space for 84. So that's what the 2,000 square foot building will do for them. They have, you know, a teacher-to-student ratio, and then also area requ- They have, you know, a teacher-to-student ratio and then also area requirements. So in order for them to exceed 84, they have to put in that other building.
To 114?
Correct.
Okay. And then I had another quick question. I was looking at the site back in the back. It looked like there was a jungle gym or something. East corner, back east corner. Is that correct? Is that, I wasn't sure. Was it a storage or jungle gym?
In the, in the northern portion of the play area, right, and of the, well, the big grassy area, but in this northern portion, that's, that's where the, the play area exists for the preschool.
Preschool, okay.
So that's just part of the outdoor activity area. And then, of course, they have the big grassy fields there also for that.
And then this, um, this letter from Linia, I think is how you say it. She's off of Warren Way. Which property is that? It was a little, is, is it the one right behind it? Is it the multifamily?
This one, I, to tell you the truth.
Can you move that up a little bit? You can keep going up.
Yeah, I, I wasn't sure which one that was for. The corner or for right behind it? Oh, sorry. I think I just answered my question. It looks like it's for the corner. Reno Investments is right on the corner.
Yeah, I believe that, I believe it's the office complex there because it says directly to the east of the church, so that,
Okay.
That's my understanding.
Quick question for the applicant. Like, clearly there's no property owners here tonight, but did you approach all the property owners across the street and, and their concerns?
Yeah, because this, the, because Heart to Hand has been in operation there, uh, for several years, uh, they've had opportunities to have contact, uh, with adjoining property owners. Uh, so, uh, that's why I was comfortable saying we have a good track record and good relations. Uh, obviously, there's no one here complaining.
Yeah.
So, uh, in fact, one of the school directors is here. He's also a, a neighborhood NAB member, so he's had quite a bit of contact in the neighborhood in the past. And I, I think if, if there was an issue, uh, we would have either taken steps to address it or you'd be hearing about it tonight.
Okay, but you approached them because of this doubling almost of children? I mean, have you approached them, actually physically approached them, or just the noticing?
Uh, as far as the, the technical end, just the noticing.
Okay.
Uh, in, in this case, um, we, based on the track record I just explained, uh, we left that direct contact up to, uh, the, the school personnel. Uh, and they were, they were satisfied with that level of, of contact.
Thanks.
And, and, uh, if, if necessary, uh, I'm sure Ian with the school could, could elaborate further if, if there's more to discuss.
That's fine. Thanks.
Thanks.
Mr. Chair. I'm sorry, do you have a question?
Oh, no, I was just gonna say, one motion or you, you have a question?
No, I was prepared to make a motion if, uh,
Okay. I'll go ahead. Commissioner Levis, in, uh, case number LDC 13-00068, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the special use permit subject to conditions.
And you make the findings?
Oh, yeah. And I can, I can make all the findings. List them out.
This is Commissioner Wieske. I can second that, and I can make all the findings A through H.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone against? Pose. Pass seven to zero. Thank you. Good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Um, next thing on the agenda, the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning LaZion Report. Commissioner Wieske?
We had a brief meeting last month. City of Reno's got their maps approved. Um, and we have a meeting next month where we will be getting an update of, uh, industrial, there was an industrial property survey, um, that Regional was, uh, going to do a presentation to the Regional Governing Board, and then we'll get the follow-up on that. And that's all I have. I'm sorry. Yeah, the regional plan update was approved for everybody.
Okay, thank you. Um, announcement or, uh, report, I'm sorry. Staff announcements?
Um, I've got a few things here. The, um, Midtown Meeting following your last workshop will be scheduled for your regular meeting in September. Um, and we hope to send out some information on that ahead of time. The amendments to the TODS, we are shooting to have our required neighborhood meetings for the master plan amendment portion of it, September 30th, which will be right before your, I'm sorry, August 30th, right before your September meeting. It's extensive noticing, so, um, that's, that's what we're shooting for is August 30th. Um, it'll be probably in the 5,000 notices range, somewhere in there. So it's gonna be a big, big project. And then for a City Council update, we had no items on the July 10th meeting, which is the only hearing we've had between this and your last meeting. And then the chairman has asked me to give you a quick update on the Gaslight Project. Um, I'm sure you've seen some articles in the paper on this. So, um, last month, you had before you a special use permit regarding the parcel map for the Gaslight Project up on Gaslight Lane. You recommended denial of that special use permit during the hearing. Um, staff and the City Attorney's Office representative, we were, um, listening to the, the discussion and followed up with additional discussion the following day and, um, determined that the requirement for the special use permit related to the parcel map is inconsistent with state law. So the requirement in code that triggering the special use permit for a parcel map is inconsistent with Nevada law statutes, in which case, um, it's staff's determination that the special use permit is not required and that they can go straight to parcel map. Um, and not have to go through the special use permit process. That determination has been appealed by 10 individuals. Um, so that will be going to the hearing officer next week. And, um, I'll keep you posted on where it goes from there. So I can answer questions on that if anybody has any, but that's about where it stands right now.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. Commissioner Stapleton, Claudia, you said that the code was not consistent with the statute?
That's correct.
So does that mean the code will have to be changed?
Yes. We've done an administrative interpretation, um, in the meantime, explaining that. And we would refer to state law rather than that portion of the code. Every now and then, we'll find an inconsistency in the code and we will write an interpretation, um, stating the reasons of why we can't follow that any longer. And we will follow that up with a text amendment. Um, we're gonna wait, obviously, until this goes through the appeal process to determine how that will come out.
Okay, and then at that point, we'll, after that?
You'll see the text amendment following that.
And then on the Midtown, uh, plan, you said the next, the next, there will be a meeting at our next meeting. Does that mean it'll be on our agenda?
Yes, it'll be on your agenda and it'll be, uh, it'll have the, the full ordinance on there.
Okay, thank you.
For a public hearing. You're welcome.
All right. Uh, Commissioners, suggestion for future agenda items? I have a question for legal. In the bylaws, as I read through the bylaws, it specifically states that staff goes first in the presentations.
Okay.
And then, uh,
The applicant?
Yeah, then the applicant, which we've reversed that over the years. Is that a big issue or?
I don't think it's a big issue. I mean, we can review that, and if we need to revise that, we can get that revised, whatever the preference of the body is.
I think we'll, we'll review that. I think we changed the bylaws. I'm not sure if you have a current copy.
Mr. Chairman, I have a copy of those revised bylaws here with us tonight that was just passed out two months ago. And that's where it says that staff goes first in procedures. So that's different than what I, when I was chair, we changed that and we amended the bylaws. And now it's been amended back to the way it was previous before I was chairman.
I'm gonna, I'll check the record on that. I don't remember it getting changed back. So we'll check the record on that, make sure that's clear.
And if my memory's correct, it also says after a presentation, then we ask questions instead of having both presentations. Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
So if you could?
I'll check on that and bring it back to you.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else? Uh, public comments. Uh, since there's nobody in here and we don't have any public comments, I'll close that. Agreement?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night. Thank you.